Camera's on.
All right, Town of Tufflerboro Planning Board meeting April 5th. Call it the order and we're gonna do things a little bit quicker. Skip the minutes for now and go right to our guest speaker, Mary P. Mullager, gravel tax fraser, first day in New Hampshire.
I guess what you would like me to do is to explain a little bit about 155E. Is that in the local regulations? Is that... okay. I know that you've recently adopted some local regulations, five new ordinances. What the main driving force is, is RSA 155E. That is the local regulation of earth excavation. That's statutory. All towns have to comply with that statute. The municipalities may adopt, in addition to 155E, local earth excavation regulations. Your regulations cannot conflict with the law. They may be more stringent, but they cannot be less stringent. When they enacted 155E, they put in a grandfathering. And so, for those pits that had been existing, they call them existing excavations under RSA 155E2, they said that if the owner had a lawfully existing excavation as of August 24th of 1979, and it had been removing material for two years prior to that, they could continue excavating without a permit, so long as they met certain criteria. And the criteria is spelled out within the existing excavation sections, 155E2, row number one. And it talks about zoning, it's exempt from zoning and other ordinances, so long as they were in compliance back at that point in time. And they had to continue to excavate. They couldn't have stopped and then started. One of the requirements was that the existing excavations had to supply to the regulator, who's the planning board, a report between August 4th of 1989 and August 4th of 1991. That report could have been done on the back of a napkin, on a piece of paper, but it had to contain certain items. It had to tell you, tell the regulator where the location of the excavation was and when it first began. Had to give a description of the limits of the permissible expansion area. How much area, if you had 100 acres and you intended to excavate 50 of it, that's what you had to tell the regulator, or you're gonna excavate all 100. You had to give an estimate of the area that was open, already excavated, at that time. And you had to give an estimate of the amount of commercially viable earth that was left on the property. So you had a two-year period from August 4th of 1989 to August 4th of 1991 to get that report into the regulator. I call that the golden ticket. Okay, so if you did that, that was a valuable piece of paper, turn it to the regulator, that would have grandfathered your property from local regulations and ordinances, okay, that came after. It would have grandfathered you from a permit.
I see your question.
Yes.
How would they have known to do that?
Thank you.
In here, it says that the, within... The owners or operators of any existing excavation area for which no permit has been obtained in this chapter shall file a report with the local regulator within one year after receiving written notice of this requirement from the regulator, and in no case later than two years following August 4th of 1989. The regulator should have sent out a notice. It was in all the papers and people who are in the business should have been aware of, you know, what the change in requirements were, because law went through a lot of changes at that point in time.
Mary, what about a pit that's been going on since 1935?
That is what they were grandfathering through this event.
All right, well, you were just saying certain years, so I was just going there.
Yeah, you had to notify the town.
It had to be existing prior to August 24th of 1979 and be removing material as of August 24th of 1977. So if you had started in 1930s and had continued, then you were within that existing excavation that all you had to do was do that report. And that would have grandfathered you from local regulations and permits. The only thing that you would have been subject to are the minimum and express operational standards in 155E and the minimum and express reclamation standards in 155E5 and 155E5A. Those would be the only standards under 155E that you had to operate under. So the question should have been, and what the planning board should have been doing is, during that time, they should have been looking for that report. And if you turned that in, you would have hopefully locked it up in a safe someplace, because it was a very valuable document. That would have grandfathered you from local permitting. If that report was not done between that time period, the excavation would fall into an abandoned excavation. So you either had to reclaim the pit within a certain amount of time, or you had to come in and go for a permit itself, under 155E3.
But the planning board was supposed to notify us? Or the selectmen were supposed to notify us as pit owners about that?
The regulator is the planning board unless otherwise voted by the town. So if the town had voted by a town meeting, you would either become the selectman or the EPA. So unless that had been voted, then the regulator is the selectman. And the selectmen or the regulator, they haven't just assumed this position recently. You've always been the regulator of 155E.
You're doing the planning.
Planning board, thanks.
I guess none of us has been here past six years.
Actually, I can speak to that, because I was chairman of the planning board at the time and the, we never did anything with it in the 80s period. It's like it never even existed.
Okay. Even if the regulator did not notify, it was still the operator's, property owner's responsibility, because here it says "in no case" and "in no case later than two years." So even if they didn't notify, you still had the responsibility to get that in. Now, I'm not an attorney. I don't profess to be an attorney. You'll want to check with legal counsel. But in dealing with other towns who did nothing over the years...
We're not the only town, right?
You're not the only town. The towns that did nothing as far as 155E, in fact, when the excavation tax came into existence, the department sent out letters to the towns saying, "Give us a list of all your excavations and are you actively enforcing 155E?" And half the towns wrote back and said, "What's 155E?" So it was evident that a lot of the towns didn't know what they should be doing. So dealing with other towns where they have discovered that, you know, we should have been doing something back at this point in time, and the fact that you did nothing to stop the excavations, those areas that you have continued to allow to operate, you've assessed, you filed the intents to excavate over the years, you've paid the property tax on the gravel pit. In the other towns, their attorneys have mentioned, it's called municipal estoppel, where the town allowed it to happen and did nothing to stop it. So, and again, I'm not an attorney, I'm not, but this is what I've dealt with in other towns. That because you allowed that to happen, then you inadvertently grandfathered that use of that area. However, if your area was 20 acres open and you have 50, you could not expand beyond what is there today upon this discovery saying, "We didn't do it right." So essentially, the town, by not doing anything, has grandfathered, inadvertently grandfathered that open area. Any expansion beyond that would require a 155E permit.
What would be considered opening that was cleared for excavation or any that's excavated?
Excavative, excavative. Under the minimum and express operation standards, if you did do that report between the time that was due, and let's say that at the time between, you know, August 4th of 1989, you had 10 acres open, okay? The minimum and express operational standards required that for those areas not yet excavated, that the property owner submit a reclamation bond for those areas not yet excavated. So even though they were grandfathered for that 10 acres, any expansion beyond that, they would have to have a reclamation bond for those areas to be excavated. So if you've got 10 acres open right now and you want to expand, you're gonna have to come in before the planning board for a permit, they're gonna require a reclamation bond for that new area that you're opening up. In addition to 155E regulations, there's also the DES, Department of Environmental Services, alteration of terrain permit. And there is a grandfathering through that where whatever was disturbed contiguous area as of May of 1981 is grandfathered. The alteration of terrain permits require that any disturbance excavation of earth, construction projects, more than 100,000 square feet of area, which is 2.3 acres, require an alteration of terrain permit. If you're within the shoreline protection area, it's 50,000 square feet of disturbance, contiguous disturbance. So whatever you had open as of May of 1981, so if you had 10 acres that was open, which you can prove through aerial photography, you could have expanded an additional 100,000 square feet, which would be another 2.3 acres, before you are required to have an alteration of terrain permit. In alteration terrain permit, a lot of people think, "Well, it's phased. I can do two, and then I can reclaim it and I can move on to the next two." Alteration of terrain doesn't do phasing. It's if you intend to disturb more than. So if you are permitted for 25 acres, you are intending to excavate 25 acres and you'd need an alteration of terrain permit for that. So I think what the town has tried to do is to try and get a handle on what, you know, they have for gravel pits. They've adopted some regulations and ordinances. They've asked the excavators to come in to talk to them. I don't know how much further do you want to get into 172B? And how much further do you want me to get into 155E? Because they do have a three-hour class.
If you guys have any questions, you just state your name for Leanne so she can, she's gonna shorthand it all the minutes.
So like I said, I think the town's trying to get a handle on it. It's, you know, to get you in.
Yeah, we're trying to point them in the direction of the shortest route possible. How's that? Without trying to go through what we went through on Sandy Hill Road two years ago. We've already, through zoning, exempted them. Not to go to zoning, if they have been excavating prior to 2014, 2015, we've grandfathered those in to skip zoning.
EPA.
EPA, correct. So now, it's the process of the planning process. We're just trying to get the most streamlined process we can. Is there one?
Well, I guess I would ask the excavation.
Okay, so first off...
That's Steve Hunter, yeah.
Are we gonna be required to have a complete survey of our property?
Again, that's up to the regulator, okay? Some towns would not, I mean, when you say a complete survey, are you going to be expanding or are you talking as to what you actually have open now?
I'm talking about the piece of property, number one. So some people have a 100-acre piece of property that their pit is on. Some people have a 25-acre piece of property that their pit is on. And the cost to survey the entire parcel to be able to show is... It's not a lot different than if you come in to build your house on your lot. You've already got it surveyed in that two acres. It cost you, I don't know how much, but... And then you can plot out your house and your septic and all that sort of things. But you have a survey. Most of us that own a piece of property, it's never been surveyed. It's just, it's just a chunk of land boarded by Mr. Genie and boarded by so-and-so and so-and-so. So that right there is a big expense for all of us that are only selling a few yards of material a year.
And that's where you're gonna have to determine, you know, what is it that you want to do with that piece of property? Is it viable to go in and permit the entire parcel? Is there material left on that parcel? That's where you're gonna have to make that decision. You've already got a certain amount of area that's open. If you are going to be expanding what is already there, then you're gonna have to have a plan, okay? Depending upon what the planning board requires, I know that some towns will take, unless you're gonna go right out to the borders, they will accept something less than a survey, as long as it's accurate, you're able to give the topography, you're able to show the slopes to their satisfaction. I mean, if you do it on the back of a napkin, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be descaley and be able to show where it's located. They should be able to go out and take a look at it to see where it's located. They're gonna want elevations, okay, to know where it is, where are wetlands. And besides that, like I said, if you are going to be expanding that disturbed area, DES is going to require plans. And those are typically engineered in survey plans.
Right. So that's where we jump into it. And I don't know, and I don't think anybody here knows, how much material would be used out of, and I'll just use mine as an example, out of my pit in the next five years, because nobody here knows what the economy in this town's gonna be to require some of that material. This is already a dead town and there's nothing going on here. And, you know, I mean, you've got a few McMansions being built on the lake and there's no industry here, there's nothing like that. So, you know, I don't see where the $50,000 cost of getting these plans completed and your alteration of terrain permits and all that sort of thing is going to ever be realized back out of material.
And that's where, you know, maybe you wanna, you know, look at it and say, "How much area do I have open? And what's the minimum amount?" You know, I mean, I think the towns tried to say that if you've got 30 acres, they've grandfathered you from zoning. Perhaps you could approach the planning board and say, "We're not really sure, you know, how much longer this is gonna last or if it's gonna be viable. Can we do some phasing and work in phases? And if the economy is, picks up and there's demand and everybody else runs out of the supply, that they would allow you to continue on that property as, in doing phases, so you're not going with the entire property. You're doing phasing locally. That does not exclude you from the alteration of terrain."
Alteration of terrain phase.
Right.
And the alteration of terrain is a big expense.
Yes. But there's no, they can't exempt you from that.
May I, could you, again, go back to the dates on the alteration of terrain and what? You said after a specific date, anything more than 100,000 for the alteration?
May of 1981.
Was it, if you excavated more than the 100,000?
No, whatever was disturbed.
Right.
Okay, so if I had 10 acres of disturbance as of May of 1981, that 10 acres is exempt basically from an alteration of terrain.
Pretty 1981, okay.
I could go, I could go around the perimeter. I could excavate 2.3 acres and not have to have a permit. But once I went over that 2.3, you know, I'm at 12.3, then whatever I'm going out into would require an alteration permit.
Just out of curiosity, anybody ever get an alteration of terrain permit? See, that, the real issue isn't this. The real issue was DES.
That's what I just said, the alteration of terrain permit is the expensive part.
But basically...
After the reclamation plan.
Well, basically, your alteration of terrain permit would be the same plan.
It's the same plan.
Same plan.
But you pay so much per square footage over 100,000 square feet, over your first 100,000. So if you had a 15-acre chunk, and I don't have that number in front of me, but it's, it gets expect, that gets expensive.
In addition to the surveying, yeah.
Let's just assume somebody had a pit that was 10 acres back in 1981, that's now 20 acres and no alteration of terrain permit has ever been applied. And I realize this is not your department. How do they, do you know how they typically handle on stuff that's been going on for 35 years and the permit was never?
Retroactive permits.
Right. And you gotta go back and pay for the square footage and?
I don't, I'm not sure, but I know that, I don't know, it's probably about two years ago, the alteration of terrain asked me for my list of excavations and they were starting up north and they were looking at aerial photography and making their way down and getting a lot of pits that had never been, you know, filed for. Whether or not they missed this area or...
Never got to file it.
They could get to it yet. They could discover that you should have had an alteration of terrain and come back. It's just like, if I find that there's an excavation that had never filed a notice of intent to excavate, they are subject to filing since 1998. Okay, so I have people filing for 20 years' worth of excavation because it's taxation. So we're talking taxing, you know, versus regulation. DES has the ability that, just because you didn't do it doesn't mean that you are exempt from it. So some of you may be subject to it. But the plans that are done for an alteration of terrain, basically, they're gonna show the existing elevations. They're gonna show the final elevations. That's your reclamation plan. The only thing that's different between an alteration of terrain plan and 155E plan is that the 155E plan has to show test pits to show the average elevation to the groundwater in and around the excavation. So basically, that's the only difference. DES plans would supersede the towns when it comes to like wetlands and whatnot. The town has setbacks under 155E that has to be met. It's 50 feet from a disapproving of butter and 10 feet from an approving of butter. So there are setbacks within the statute. DES may have other setbacks from wetlands and stuff like that. So it's pretty, you know, comprehensive, you know, comprehensive as far as plans. So I think, you know, what you have to do is, you know, come before the planning board and say, "Look, this is what we have open right now. This is where we're at." You're gonna have to figure out what is it that we want to do? Do we want to continue excavating? How much more do we want to continue excavating? You can look at the aerial photography. I don't know if you've been out on Google Earth at all. Have any of you been on Google Earth? It's a really great tool where you can go out and, if you download Google Earth Pro, you can actually go around and calculate the area that's open. And there's a little clock on the bar that you can click on that clock and go back in time and look at aerial photography. Okay, so once you find your spot and you're looking down at it, you can click on that clock and then go back. It's a tool I use a lot. And if you get the Pro, then you do a polyline around it. You click around the outer edges and it'll calculate that area for you. Okay, so it's a tool that the town, you know, and you can work on to get, figure out what do you have, what's open, what's existing, and start from there. That'd be my suggestion. Since nothing's been done, you've allowed it to happen all this time in order to get a handle on it. I think that's, that's a starting point. If any of you are, you know, do subject design or whatever, I'm sure you're, you know, used to going out and taking measurements and doing sketching and, you know, taking some elevations and stuff like that. And maybe that would be the thing to do also, is to try and prepare a plan. I know that DES, if your excavation, no water's gonna be leaving. It's more of a bowl type where everything's coming in. They're not as hard on the requirements because nothing's gonna be leaving the site. Their concern is that the, you know, water leaving the property, groundwater. In addition to DES, there's also the EPA. Okay, anybody that disturbs one acre or more where there's a possibility of groundwater leaving the site has to have a stormwater protection plan. Okay, so you need plans for that. So it all works together. EPA's, they call it a SWEP, works in conjunction with the alteration of terrain. They're trying to, you know, retain and keep the groundwater, you know, water safe, water quality. So that's the whole, the big picture. And if your property comes in and it's going down and it's all down, it's not as critical, you know, when it comes to alteration of terrain to have the engineered plans, because nothing's going anywhere. You don't have the wetlands. Okay, so it's a lot easier as far as permitting and, you know, plans. But my suggestion would be, excuse me, that you determine what you have, where you want to go, okay? Because remember, if you start expanding, you're gonna have to get a permit. You're gonna, you may or may not get caught from DES as far as having to, having had a permit. But if you're gonna be expanding, then you're going to, you know, be required to have an alteration of terrain permit. So you're gonna have to figure out what, how much viable earth do you have there? You know, is it worth going through it? Or is it worth just staying where you are? And then even if you are staying where you are and you're not gonna be continuing on, whatever you've opened up has to be reclaimed. You're not exempt from reclamation, okay? So any pit, okay, that's been open, has to reclaim the property. It doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna go in and spread, you know, five or six inches of loam, because it probably wasn't five or six inches of loam to start with. But you're gonna do the slopes so that they're not eroding, okay? You're gonna stabilize those. You're gonna get it capable of growing, you know, and restoring yourself. Sometimes if you walk away from it, nature does a pretty good job reclaiming itself. So if it's good enough in there to have nature start, you know, getting the pines coming up and the other trees coming up, then you have an easy job of stabilizing the rest. If you are planning on, say, with your property, you've excavated it down to where you want to be and, you know, what's the highest and best use of it? Would it be for a campground? Would it be building lots? Would it be some other, you know, used storage, you know, buildings, facility?
Solar panels?
Solar farm, okay? That's alternative use of that area. And under 155E, excuse me, there is an exception. It's under 155E5B and basically, the regulator upon application and following hearing may grant an exception in writing to the standards contained in 155E4A5 and 5A for the caution. So they could grant an exception to the reclamation standard. So if you came in and said, "Look, I have the opportunity to put in a solar farm. It doesn't make any sense to reclaim the property where they're gonna have to tear it up and keep the grass down, if any, to put in the solar panels, to put in the electrical." Or if you were doing storage buildings, you're gonna put in the concrete. The only thing they'll be concerned about are the rest of the slopes if those are stabilized. So there are alternative uses. And, you know, of course, the planning board's gonna wanna make sure that that gets done. So...
So in my, every, I think every job I've ever done, whether it be a house site or whatever, I've had materials that have to leave the site and I take them back to my pit. And I put the loam in a pile and I put the boulders in another pile and stuff like that. If I decided, if I decided that I wasn't gonna spend $50,000 to get my permit, can I still clean up all that recyclable material without having a permit? can I still clean up all that recyclable material without having a permit?
The, it tends to be part of the nature of the beast, is most people who have gravel pits are usually in the business of, you know, excavation and site work, and you bring back the spoils, you know? You bring back the loam, you cut a little bit and take it back over there, and you have some and they get back what you took away. That loam that you have filed on site, you could use on the site to reclaim it, but if you said that you were going to stop excavating completely and that you were going to just use that as a contractor's yard, okay, where you're going to continue to, you know, park your equipment and bring material in and process it and then haul it out, you may not have the grandfathering as a pit because you're not excavating. That may be another use. That would be up to the town and the ZBA to say if that's an allowed use because 155E pertains to excavation sites, not processing yards, okay? I mean, you know, manufacturing of bark mulch and everything else, that's a different use. So they may grant you for that, or give you a permit for that use or whatever, I'm not sure what the ZBA would do, but you can just, you know, part of the reclamation, you just can't leave piles of stuff all over the place.
If it's a different use that has been ongoing all along since 1950, 70, wouldn't that use be grandfathered since it had predated zoning in the town?
I'm not an attorney.
Well, you play one pretty well.
See, what was the old attorney shows that were on TV? I don't remember.
I just mean, the argument is that it's a different use than the use that's been happening there since whenever, then wouldn't that use be grandfathered?
Well, the.
Wouldn't it be a non-conforming use for the law?
Possibly. Okay. The grandfathering under 155E is for excavation, okay? And basically, it says that under 155E 2A, under the abandoned excavations, it states that if no commercially viable earth has been removed in a two-year period, okay? If, if no earth material sufficient weight or volume to be commercially useful has been removed during a two-year period, either before August 24th of 1979 or after, okay, then they become abandoned. So the grandfathering is an excavation, which is excavating, okay, from the site. You'd have to then look at the definitions of excavation, which means excavation means a land area which is used or has been used for the commercial taking of earth, including all slopes. And that talks about the excavation site means an area of contiguous land and common ownership upon which excavation takes place. So when that excavation stops and all he's doing is bringing the material in, I can't answer that question.
But in theory?
Possibly.
I mean, and to that point, it could be.